Yes.
Six o'clock, and I'll call this Berry City Council meeting to order this Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. Council President tonight include Council Dearing, Council Chambel, Council Booton, Council Wazak, Councilor Stockwell, and Council Lozon. We have many members of staff joining us tonight. The agenda is available online and in the back of the room if you'd like a copy. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded in subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, both of which are available online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to everybody joining us here tonight and remind and remind those joining us online that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. The city offers online access as a convenience, and we will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. Whether you're online or here in the room, please raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized, and I'll ask that you online remain muted and here in the room come forward and speak in the microphone so everybody on the recording can can hear you. I'll call in speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if necessary so that we can get through our agenda tonight. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we will get it sorted. And I'd like to thank everyone in advance for participating in a civil and respectful way. That takes us to our second item, the agenda adjustments to the agenda. Manager Sterling Castro.
Thanks, Mayor. I have one adjustment to request, which is to add the ratification of a labor contract with United Steelworkers. Not sure if council wants that on consent or as an item of new business, but.
You sent the, I mean, we've had the briefings. You sent the contract. I'm fine with it on consent as long as everyone else is.
If there's no objection to having it on the consent agenda, we'll call it four E. All right, councilors, do you have any adjustments?
No.
All right, hearing and seeing none. That takes us to the consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes of the.
Oh, I always skip over that.
Are there visitors in communications is the next item. It's an opportunity to speak to any item that's not on the agenda. But if you'd like to speak to an item that is on the agenda, just raise your hand as we take up that item of business, and I'll call on you then. Chief.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce our newest employee, Marcel Bro. He started with us on Friday, and he'll spend three to four weeks, working days, getting to know the lay of the land, and before he finds his home on a new shift. So just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce him to everybody.
Congratulations on the hire and welcome.
Yeah, he's a local, grew up, grew up here. Yes, yep. Graduated from Spalding two years ago, three years ago.
One twenty-one.
Yep. So he's some of our local, local talent. So we're happy to have him.
Fantastic.
Congratulations.
Why don't you tell us about yourself in thirty seconds?
Marcel Bro, grew up in Berrystown, over on Hill Street, Spalding, and yeah.
Been on the call force?
Yeah, you've been on the call force, actually working diligently for the past year to to obtain the certifications that he needs to qualify for the position. So.
Well done. Stay safe out there.
On board.
Dr. Finner, Steve Finner. Good evening.
Good evening. Very briefly, at the last council meeting, there was some discussion of changing the city charter to allow or to restrict membership on city committees to city residents. I want to suggest that the progress, that the situation is more nuanced than a simple yes or no. There are clearly city committees, in my opinion, that should be populated only by city residents. There are other city committees and task forces which would benefit from having membership from people other than just city residents. And I offer up for an example of that, the task force on homelessness, which contains both. I do believe that a majority of appointees to any committees should be city residents. And I'm suggesting perhaps that council or the manager appoint a five-person group committee to take a look at our committees with an eye to recommending which ones should be restricted to city residents and which ones would be open to some appointees other than city residents. And if the manager or council chooses to appoint such a body, since I'm suggesting it, I'm going to have to serve and do that.
I didn't get the tail into that. You said you're going to have to.
I said that if such a group, a body is appointed, since I've suggested it, I will probably draft it for service.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Dr. Finner. Are there any other items for visitors in communication? Right, hearing and seeing none. That takes us now to the consent agenda, which we have approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. We have approval of the city warrants from the week of September 20th, 2023. Are there licenses and permits?
Nope.
No licenses and permits. We have authorization of the manager to execute contracts to Sage Carpentry for City Hall and Public Safety Building Flood Repair, and last, the ratification of the contract with the steelworkers. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Council Chambel, second by Council Wazak. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to item five, the city clerk and treasurer report.
Just a couple things. Continuing reminder that the first quarter property taxes are due by October 2nd, which is two weeks from yesterday. Water and sewer bills are also due by that same date. We apologize for having them fall on the same date, but as we all know, the tax bills went out a little later this year. We'll be back on our regular schedule starting with the November installment. We also continue to receive abatement requests associated with flood and storm damage from July. And we encourage people who did have such damage to call and talk with me about what the abatement process is and submit requests. I know that the manager is going to have a budget presentation and mention the abatements later on, and I think his number is forty. We're now to forty-three. So we continue to receive them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the clerk or treasurer? Right, hearing and seeing none. That takes us to item six, the liquor and cannabis control board.
Nothing.
Which we have no application. So we'll go on to item seven, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple updates. Police body cameras, the city is being awarded a federal grant for body cameras through the Small Rural and Tribal Law Enforcement Micro Grant Program. And we're one of only two agencies in Vermont that was awarded this grant out of 265 that applied. So this will provide us with $22,000 towards the cost of of the body cameras. Just for awareness, we've also applied for a state body, body worn camera grant through the Department of Public Safety. That's the total pot there is $210,000 to assist Vermont agencies with starting or expanding body camera programs. We still don't know if we have received that, and we still don't know if we can accept both. So we're waiting to see what the the landscape is before we accept the federal one or wait until we hear about the state award. Either in either case, we're hopeful to begin purchasing and implementation by the end of this month or early October, and we'll be using the same vendor that provides some other equipment for the police department so that we can bundle this into a long-term contract. So very excited about that. I know the the police advisor committee has done some great work there. I know Chief Vale's a big proponent of this, as am I, so we're very excited to to roll this out. And then just a reminder, tonight, there's no parking on Main Street from Route 62 to City Hall Park. That's for street sweeping. That's being done by Public Works, and this is for preparation for the Heritage Festival. So tonight, from 11:00 PM until 6:00 AM, and tomorrow, Wednesday into Thursday, no parking on Main Street from Route 62 to City Hall Park so that we can clean up our streets for the festival. And then finally, just one item of flood recovery updates. The landslide reviews are ongoing with our geotechnical engineer. I think as council recalls, the landslide that was getting the biggest attention was on Pike Street. That one, unfortunately, is being delayed. They're having trouble securing a drilling company for that. So that is now pushing out into October. I've called Mr. Rayburn, the owner there, who we've been in touch with, and so he's aware. And I know the geotechnical firm is working as hard as they can to secure someone. It's just difficult. So unfortunately, that will slide a little bit. But the other reviews are ongoing. I know there's one on Kenny Place that is particular interest. I know that one, I believe, is teed up first from the desktop review. So we'll be able to have some more information about that one hopefully soon. That's it for me.
Council Stockwell, did you have a question?
No, no. I'm just happy to hear that Kenny Place is.
Yes.
First up.
I'm sure Council Wazak's happy to hear about the body cameras.
I am.
Also, Dearing.
Any updates on the Berlin Street roadwork?
So they're going to be working there at least through this week and probably through next week is the is the likelihood there. They've been working, they were working there all through today, and today they were closed on Aiken Street. But they, yeah, it's going to continue to work. It's going to continue this week and likely into next week as well.
Are we able to make any accommodations for the residents on Aiken Street?
So I think Aiken Street was just today that it was closed.
It got by Aiken Street today.
Okay.
So it will be open. They'll have the private abutment in between construction vehicles and stuff, but the drive will be open.
Yeah.
And we won't have any more issues with the residents trying to get around the detour.
We shouldn't. I know our crews.
Barricades. I looked, there's spots on both sides there so they can.
Okay.
Get by.
I just wanted to make sure we're addressing the concern from the resident.
Yes, and I know the crews are aware that people have to get through. And as Brian said, there's room between the barricades. It's for local traffic only, so I would just want to stress that, that this is for the people who live there and need to get home and get out of their home. But yeah, it'll stretch into next week.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that.
Are there any other questions for the city manager? All right, hearing and seeing none. That takes us to our first item of new business, which is an update on the water system.
Thank you. And Council Wazak, there's a PowerPoint there for the folks on the screen and in the crowd. So thank you, council. You have copies on your desk as well. I wanted to provide an update on the extensive disruption that our water system experienced after the flood. So on slide two, just for background, even on the day of the flood, before the flood peaked, Public Works crews were working to resolve a water main break that had happened in Sperry prior to the event unfolding. So the system was already, we were already dealing with an issue in the water system the day the flood before, before the flood got to its worst point. And then, of course, after that, there was just extensive disruption during the flood itself. The turbidity at the water treatment plant caused disruption of sediments that occurs in the pipes and naturally in the water system. And so those just became disturbed. And that's what a lot of our residents started to observe after, after the flood sort of calmed down. Also, as a reminder, seems like ages ago, but we were under a boil water advisory for for quite some time, from July 10th to July 18. So this, just to to highlight, the the system disruption was significant, severe, and extensive, and the fact that we're still dealing with it, I think, points nothing else to the fact of how how significant the event was to our water system. These are some pictures just to to highlights. These were from our water treatment operator, just to show some of the impacts. This is some test, a test at the plant. Jake, this first picture, is that a, that's a transmission line? Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Jake. And then the next slide, Council Wazak, is just some more, some more evidence. And Jake, I don't know if you want to describe what was going on here.
Sorry, Jake, could you come up to the.
Yeah, so back on the other side, that beaker was the water actually coming into our treatment facility on the day, day after, and almost a week after the flood. It looked very similar to that. The one on the left was transmission line breaking, peak flood in a different location when they had scheduled pairs that day that triggered the boil water notice. And the next one was, that was our upper orange reservoir, where the whole purpose of it is to catch sediment and silt. And as you can see from the flood, this was a couple days after how much sediment and debris got into the treatment facility just before this was working. So this was dredged and removed days after the flood. So this is essentially in line to what's coming into the treatment facility. So it's kind of, wasn't just the the distribution system itself. It was kind of from where it comes to where it goes, the entire, entire system.
Thanks, Jake. Slide five, just to highlight some of our efforts to mitigate this, which have been ongoing and continue through today. So we started system-wide flushing on August 7, and that concluded on August 25. So this is a, this is a much longer flushing period than normal. Initially, we expected the flushing to take three days, which is about what it normally takes. Our water operators are finding that it was taking much longer to get to the clear water at the hydrants. And so, as you may recall, this extended for quite a while, just because of the conditions they were, they were coming across as they were doing this flushing. For many residents, the flushing helped clear the waters. And obviously, for for some others, it continued and persisted. So as it persisted, we escalated our interventions in the system. The next step was to drain and drain the Pierce Road tank, which happened on September 4, and it was refilled by our water treatment team by on September 5. Beyond that, the efforts have continued. That the Pierce Road tank also helped some customers. Obviously, it's still, for some, it still remains an issue. But we have expanded the scope of our sampling and testing program to continue to make sure the water is safe. The water treatment team was doing tests all throughout after the the impact of the flood, but they have expanded it significantly as the water discoloration continued, and all of the samples have continued to come back safe. And that's sort of what we get to in slide six, which is the extensive sampling that Jake and his team have done. So these are all the, all the items that have been tested for iron, manganese, pH, color, phosphorus, free and total chlorine, total coliform and E. coli, and heterotrophic plank counts. The team has taken samples at 21 different sites from September 8 to September 15. So eight times, eight samples, eight tests times 21 sites is 168 total tests. And in addition to that, approximately 70 total coliform and E. coli samples were taken since the flood to through last week. They are all coming back absent and safe and from biological activity. And just for transparency, all of our test results are published by the state online. We've put the website here where every resident can go and see what those test results are. But every single test that we've, that the team has collected has come back at safe levels for for consumption.
Council Booton?
Yep. For those that don't know and didn't Google it, heterotrophic, trophic plate counts are commonly used to assess general microbiological quantity of drinking water. Just saying. Big words in there. I have to Google it. No, I cannot.
Yeah, I got a D in chemistry, so I did a lot of learning this week. So Jake had to dumb things down quite a bit.
The important, important thing is that we know that our water's safe.
Yes, exactly. So slide seven. So what is causing the discoloration? So the city and state officials that we've been speaking to throughout this period, we agree that the primary cause is, is the disruption from the flood, and it's sending sediment into various pockets of the system. So this is not just our assessment. This is what experts in the state also agree to be the the cause of this discoloration. Now, in areas with higher color results, they've, it has tested slightly for slightly elevated levels of manganese. Now, I want to, before I get into what manganese is, I want to say, even though it's slightly elevated levels of manganese, it's still very safe levels of manganese. So we think that's contributing to the discoloration because of that correlation of the of the slightly elevated levels. Manganese is a natural mineral, builds up over time, and it's contained in many common foods. It's also very common in well or spring water. So we think there's a, some correlation there, and it's probably the cause of the discoloration. But the root cause essentially is just the disruption that was caused by the, by the flood itself. So what are we continuing to do about the discoloration? We are doing some targeted flushing. We've been receiving and collecting calls and mapping where calls are coming in. The treatment, water treatment staff is doing tests at people's homes to give them that peace of mind when we get those reports. And then they're able to do some targeted flushing if we see some clusters of where that's occurring. This is where I got my chemistry lesson. They have increased their use of sodium permanganate to oxidize dissolved iron and manganese. So that was, that's what Jake says. And so that, what that does is it turns the particles into particles that can be filtered out in the clarifiers and filters. So, so that's, that's what we're doing to try to combat what we're learning from the tests. And as I mentioned, staff are conducting tests directly on impacted homes, and they will, they will continue to do so. So I think before I move on to the next part of the presentation, we also, I won't speak for the state, but I think at the city level, we agree that the, the ultimate result is going to be time. And I know that that's not a comforting answer for a lot of people who continue to have discoloration, but that's, that's really what's going to resolve this. Our test tells us that the water's safe. We think we know where the correlations are with the manganese. Still, even though slightly elevated, they're safe. But really, what's going to happen is time, and time has helped cure this. As the team has done more flushing, as they drained the tanks, and as we've gotten further away from the event, more and more people are resuming normal water. So we think that's what ultimately will will resolve it. And I know that's, it's hard to not be able to give a specific answer or timeline, but that's going to be the, the solution. Also wanted to pivot here on slide nine. I know we've, we talked a little bit last week about water and sewer rate increases that went up this year in August 8. On August 8, the city recommended these revised water rates for fiscal year 24. We did this because, A, an analysis found that our wastewater fund was was woefully underfunded, and the rates are necessary to keep up with the costs and capital needs for, to keep our water and sewer infrastructure reliable. We did a capital improvement plan earlier this year, and accumulated need between FY23 and FY30 is almost $25 million. That's what we think is needed in maintenance over the course of that, of those years to maintain the system, improve the system. We need resources to do that, and that's what our water rates help us do. And just for reference on slide 10, this is, you know, the impacts of the increases were contained in the, in the information packet that were included with the, with when, when this was approved. But just want to put some numbers to what these increases really mean. So on the water side, the water fund is, is healthier than the sewer fund. So the increases there were limited to 3%. They're actually lower increases than last year. And that, the the base rate was an increase of 3%, which equates to $2.08 per quarter. The use rate was increased by 3%, which for a typical water user will mean $3.26 per quarter. The sewer base rate was also increased 3%, and that is a $2.59 increase per quarter. The use rate was increased 21%. That increased, that equals for an average user about $23.52 per quarter. These are necessary to make sure that we can, particularly on the sewer side, get that fund into a healthier position. They're necessary so that we can, on the water side, maintain the system, keep it reliable. I know many other places have higher increases. I think these were, we thought these were quite reasonable and are for a good cause, which is to make sure that we have reliable water and sewer. So that's it from, from me, council. I'm open to questions, questions you may have.
Council Wazak?
Could you just give sort of, for those who might be listening at home or have questions about this, could you just go into a little bit further of an explanation about how the numbers on the chart relate to each other? And so like a 21%, you know, it's 21% on one portion of.
Yes.
Not 21%.
On the whole thing. Yeah. So the, the increase, if we go to slide 10, there's, there's two, there's two components to both the water bill and the sewer bill. One is a base rate, just for being a user of the system, and one is based on the use of the, of the household or, or customer. So the base rate for water is charged separately, and it's a fixed cost, and that went up 3% for water, which equals, which will, will result in a $2.08 increase for all users. The use of water is $5.46, $5.46 per 100 cubic feet. And that is also a 3% increase. And so for a typical water user in our water system, of our water system, that will result in approximately $3.26 more per quarter. So ballpark, $5.50 per quarter for a water, a typical water user. The sewer is the same, same thing. There's two charges to it. When you get your sewer bill, it's for your base connection fee. So if you're a customer of our sewer system, you just, you pay a quarterly fee to be connected, and you also pay based on the amount of sewage. And that, and the base rate went up 3%. So that for the, for everyone means $2.59 per quarter. The sewer use rate went up, that's, that is $6.77 per 100 cubic feet, and that is the portion that went up 21%. For an average user of the sewer system, that'll result in about $23.52 per quarter. So $25, $26 per quarter roughly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you average them all out, Teddy, because I did, because I had so many people call.
Well, that's.
Their, their usage, yeah, their usage was up. It had to be. Because apples to apples, if you used exactly the same amount of water, and obviously, you're using the same water, you're using the same sewer, if you use the same water, your bill should have gone up between 4% and 5%. Not, everyone sees a 21 and freaks out, but the 21 is roughly 25% of your total bill, which is 21% times .25, which is five and change. So does that make sense? But it's 5%. I mean, that's what a typical, if your usage was the same, you should have seen between a 4% and 5% increase in your bill.
Council Dearing?
Mr. Manager, how many adjustments have we had so far, do you know, with the water bills based on the flooding?
The water bill adjustments continue at 52. 52 adjustments for about $52,000. That hasn't changed since last week.
Just so that we're all on the same page, city-wise, what is the process for someone to have that looked at when they call Clint?
So they should call, they should call Clint, and what Clint will do is, and he's been doing this proactively too, but he will look at their usage, measure it based on previous year's historical data. And if we see a spike one way or the other, then he will, he will make an adjustment that way. He's also proactively doing it. So as he's getting readings, he's, he's seeing unusual spikes, and he can sort of preempt some of them as well. But if you think you have a spike, if you think you, you, you had a spike from the flood, calling Clint is the best route, and he will, he will look at your historical use and, and make a determination from there.
Thank you, I just want to keep hammering that home so people understand.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions related to the water update? Guarantee none. That takes us to the budget update.
All right, thank you. So, PowerPoint number two. All right, so slide two. This is just a recap of where we landed on the 24 budget. It was a $3.7 million total expense budget, which was about a 4.3% increase, which we, we thought was a very responsible budget, it was about half the rate of inflation. And, and I think we were able to do it without sacrificing services and continuing to make important investments. We, we went through the budget with a fine-tooth comb, and I think landed at a, at a very good product. The municipal tax rate was set at $2, $2.1094, which as Clerk Dawes mentioned, was lower than the projection we had going into town meeting day, which is always good. And there you have the total homestead rate and the total non-homestead rate that resulted. So, as I mentioned, you know, we thought it was a responsible budget because it protected key services, it had some increases in, in non-tax revenues, and we were, I think, all, at the staff level, very proud of the, of the product. Into slide three, also sort of as a, as a reminder, a lot of our budget, in fact, 2/3 of it, probably could make a case for even more of it, is fixed. And, and so what that means, it's, it's nondiscretionary, we don't really have it, the ability to impact it. So, we, for example, have to pay wages and benefits, and a lot of those are driven by collective bargaining agreements. And so, they are part of our bills whether we want to pay them or not. And we also have to make debt service payments, for example, that, that we have to make whether we want to or not. So, most of our, like, 2/3 of our budget is, is really, we can't play around with, and the, the margins we can look at are within that 33%, and we could probably argue that much of that is also fixed as well. It includes things like fuel, right, that we have to put in police cruisers. So, many components of our budget are, are outside of our control. And then on top of that, on slide four, most of our revenue is from property taxes. So, here you see a breakdown of where our, our income is from, and property taxes and pilots account for 77% of it. The next largest chunk is city-generated revenue, this is for things like BOR rentals that we have. And then a very small sliver there of 2% is from federal and state assistance. So, keep that in mind as we go through this presentation, because it will get more depressing. So, on slide five, this is what, sort of at the staff level, we've identified as the greatest stressors to, to our finances. There's, there's three large buckets here. The first one is property tax abatements and loss of tax base from buyouts. So, we've had 363 structures that are damaged. Only, and as Clerk Dawes mentioned, now it's up to 43 applications for abatement have been received thus far. And we also expect, we have about 31 properties that are expected to be substantially damaged, and many of those could be sort of our universe for, for buyout. So, that, that's going to be a problem, because going back to the last slide, most of our revenue is from property taxes. If we lose property taxes, that's a big problem. And so, that's stressor number one. Stressor number two is going to be just the, the actual cost of the flood recovery. As I mentioned last week, we have, it's now over 55 projects that are identified with FEMA at a $2.7 million total cost. You know, generally speaking, and I want to highlight that generally speaking, we will be responsible for 25% of those FEMA flood recovery projects. But not, that's not always the case. Some of them maybe, some of them may be 100% paid by FEMA, and some of them, they may not reimburse at all. So, that's why I say very broadly, it's generally speaking 25%. And we hope for better, and we pray that it's not worse.
What's the differential between the 55 and 31?
So, 55 is projects, those are like actual flood recovery projects, so that's like paving, that's debris pickup. The 31 is the properties themselves.
Got it.
Yeah. And then, so that's stressor number two is the, the actual cost of flood recovery projects. And then stressor number three will be the cash flow to front the cost of the flood recovery project. So, we have to, no matter what the reimbursement level is from FEMA, we have to pay for everything upfront. So, that, you know, just looking at that, you know, put aside the, you know, the fact that we may only be responsible for a local share. Right now, we are responsible for shelling out $2.7 million within the next couple of years, outside of our budget, unbudgeted, to pay for flood recovery projects. And that is going to undoubtedly become a cash flow problem at some point down the road. So, FEMA reimburses us, and that takes up to eight weeks, but that's, that's a best-case scenario. And it, like I said, it doesn't guarantee the reimbursement levels that we are expecting necessarily. So, those are the three stressors, and on slide.
Is it okay?
Yeah, of course, please.
Okay. Would it be possible to get a list of, of the 31 properties expected to be substantially damaged? How many are river-adjacent versus how many may have been inundated, but maybe there's, there's a road or railroad in between them? Because in the past, buyouts of, in Vermont have generally not been done for things that are not river-adjacent.
Yeah. So, I, I think we can, I'm, I'm going to look to Janet, I think, a part of it, yeah. And I think part of it is, some of those homeowners themselves may not know that their home is on that list. So, I think one of the things we want to make sure we do is that they're aware as well before it becomes sort of a public document. But is that, I think that's, that's the cases too, right? Yeah. So, but yes, absolutely, I mean, that absolutely is going to be part of the, the council's process as we determine who to buy out and who not to buy out.
One quick follow-up before, Counselor Buden. And then, so for the buyouts, I know like the buyouts for Irene took 10 years in total, some of them, but, but most of them were in the three-year range, right? So, that's really what we're, when we're talking about buyouts, we're probably not talking about an FY, uh, next-year budget impact. We're talking about a couple of years down the road.
It, it, it could be, yeah, it, it could be, it depends. I think two years was the range that we, I've been talking about with Janet for when most of these buyouts happened. So, the cash flow impact and the tax base impact will be, could be removed. I think one difference here is that we'll probably have a couple of fast-track buyouts that are related to the landslides that was not necessarily an issue with prior floods. So, we're looking at two that are very clear candidates and possibly a handful of others that could be as well. So, they will, they will probably happen faster than, and it could be even be FY24. It's possible it could be FY24. Yeah.
Counselor Buden?
Yeah. I'm not, I'm having flashbacks of red Xs on doors, which, I'm looking over at Counselor Lozon, that was not a good thing for us. And I'm not sure that we really want to be releasing that information at all. I'm just saying, because that, that could have a huge negative effect on, on the owner of the property when it comes to resale. And I, I, I just, I don't know if we should be releasing that. But I'll look over at Counselor Lozon.
The purpose is just to quantify it, so we could redact the address and the owner, because the, I think the mayor's exercise is just to quantify the number.
That's fine.
It's the cumulative number, it doesn't matter where it is.
I just, right, I just.
So, we can, we can do it in a kind and gentle way.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
Good point.
So, slide six, and actually, we do have a number here, at least for the 31. And, but this, this gets to, this puts some numbers on those stressors that we talked about. So, property tax abatements, this is very difficult to estimate. And, you know, talking to Don and Clerk Dawes, we, we struggled about where to, where to land at this projection. And I think we'll have better data in December. Carol, is, is that probably a, a better sense? So, this is, this is certainly a very preliminary estimate. And, and so we're looking at north of 1 million as the, as the potential estimated impact. Could go up, could go down. In any case, it's going to be significant, and we will know better, we'll know how well we estimate it in December. The buyouts, so this is a proxy, again, using the 31 substantially damaged buildings, and the 134,000 represents what those, those contributed in property taxes last year.
To the city and school?
To, this is city and school, yes. So, that's just a proxy at this moment, this doesn't mean, right, this, this is just sort of a potential worst-case scenario, I suppose. We could, we could label it. And then impact on non-tax revenues. So, this, you know, normally, you know, 34,000 would be very painful anyway, but manageable. 34,000 on top of the others is when it starts to become just really, you know, just, just much harder. And so, this 34,000 includes loss of parking meters, rentals, which, those are, those are actually quite limited, and parking tickets. So, we've actually, when we did this analysis with Don and Clerk Dawes, we looked at several other parts of the budget, so this includes both ups and downs. So, for example, Police Department has done a great job with some dispatch contracts that we're now providing to other communities, so that's revenue for the city. So, we adjusted the budget in all directions, positive, negative. And so, unfortunately, the impact is a net negative, but it could have obviously been much worse if we didn't have those dispatch contracts. The state pilot went up significantly. So, tho, those things helped us make it a little bit less painful. And then flood recovery expenses. So, right now, 1 million and change there is what we've actually paid out for flood recovery. You know, this, this number will be adjusted, of course, there'll be some, some reimbursements that will offset some of these expenses. Again, we don't know, we have to wait for the FEMA process to pay out, to play out, to see exactly what that is. But right now, this really is more of a proxy to tell you what our cash flow problem is, which is $1 million that, of expenses we weren't counting on. So, that, that just quantifies some of those stressors we were talking about. And so, what does that mean, big picture, on slide seven? So, we're looking at a net loss in revenue of 1.15 million and likely to grow. And we're looking at a net impact on expenses of 1.02 million and likely to grow. And so, that, together, because those things are moving in the worst, in the worst possible direction for us, that creates a $2.18 million gap between our revenue and expenses that, and, which unfortunately is likely to grow, which we have to address. Question there?
Not including roughly $1 million to match FEMA.
Yeah, that, right now, this only includes.
2.18 is, I mean, and I popped your number up a little bit from 2.7 to 3.2, 25% of that would be 800,000. So, so we're coming in right around that 3 million, 3.5 million dollar number that you and I have been.
Yeah, at, 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 at the worst-case scenario, right? Because right now, we're only counting the actual flood expenses we've had, but those will grow, those will continue to grow.
So, this 1.023 million doesn't include the 25%, or does not include the 25% required match for the 2.7 million of accounted expenses?
No, the, the 1.023 is the cash that's gone out the door right now for FEMA, for flood-related expenses. We will get some reimbursement for that, and hopefully we'll get 75% reimbursement for that. What will happen, though, is that the expenses will grow, we'll have to, we'll have to shell out the rest of the 2.7 million or whatever that ends up being, we'll get some percentage of it back. Right now, what, right now, what that's hurting us on is, is on our expense side, because we don't have any revenue to show for it yet. And, and it will continue to grow, if that makes, if that makes sense. So, Counselor Lozon is correct that, you know, if we assume that $2.7 million in expense is going to hit our budget within the next, you know, year or so, that's, that's going to, that's going to be the, the stress, that's going to be a cash flow stressor for sure until we get the reimbursement.
Cat, Ellen?
I had a question on the previous slide, please. On the impact, the non-tax revenues, were, were the parking meters already operating on a profit? Or if they are not operating on a profit, is that an opportunity to reduce costs to the city in general to ha, to not have the, the meters in general?
Yeah, there was revenue there, it's, I'm trying to think, Don, you probably have the numbers in front of you.
I guess revenue at a profit, right?
We don't break it down by age.
Although, although, one budget year you did, you gave us a little snapshot, and I think it was running at a loss with.
I just wonder if that's an opportunity to decrease the loss in revenue if the cost to actually service the meters is a larger cost than the city is getting?
It could be.
Because what, what's the point?
It could be, but the, the cost to the city is to staff members that we have to lay off. So, that's, you know, that's the, you know, is that a discussion for, you know, when there's attrition, maybe? But, but the, the cost is not like a, it's not a contract, it's not a, it's not a, a non-personal cost, it's, it's to, to employees.
But the other thing, Cat, though, like.
Costs that go along with it?
There are, but, but any cost that I'm, that I, I think they're minimal compared to the revenue that we're generating for, for the, the parking tickets.
And what's the revenue side, Don?
Between tickets and meters and permits.
Over three, no? Over 300?
Close to it.
So, one to three, so it is running to profit?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm.
When you look at everything.
It's helping pay for the maintenance of the parking lots, is what it does.
Yeah, the, the tickets are sort of a, a biggie, so the problem is if you didn't have meters, you wouldn't have tickets, because there are no meters. So, you've got to look in different spots to truly measure the revenue.
It's three lines, yeah.
It was just an extra question.
Oh, good thought.
Yeah, okay.
Nope, thanks, Cat. So, slide eight.
Approaches?
Approaches, yes, thank you, Counselor Wozzak. So, just, just some of our initial approaches. We're eliminating and freezing discretionary spending where we can. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I mean, this is, this is like a token fix, but we, we got, we terminated CClick Fix. It was a, it's a small contract, it wasn't getting used, it's $5,000. I'm not suggesting this is the solution to our problems, but just an example of, we are just, we have to get rid of things that are just not showing the value at this point, and we know that there will be much harder decisions than this, but this is just one, like, really snap one that we thought could help us. We're delaying expenses, so we, early, last year, we talked to you about Manager Plus, this was going to be our fleet management software. And, you know, we really thankful the council approved this, we think this will be really helpful for us down the road. But we're delaying the, the implementation because that helps us push out expenses, because this is one of those things that we can, we can wait to do this. This is not going to take priority over some of the other needs that we're going to have. And then, really Clerk Dawes and Don are doing a great job with our, managing our cash flow so that we can avoid borrowing until it's absolutely necessary. So, right now, we have about 4.5 million in cash between all accounts, but that, that does include 2.5 million in ARPA funding. And we are going to explore short-term, short-term expense anticipation note line of credit from the bond bank, as Clerk Dawes mentioned last week, to help better manage our cash flow. They've offered, I think, I think some, some great terms, and, and that'll be our, probably our first step for when cash flow becomes a problem. Right now, it's okay, but it can quickly escalate as a, as a, as a problem for us.
We actually, the, the short-term LOC that we're exploring is with our bank, Community Bank. And I've received from them their, their projection for a 3 million LOC, interest rate of 3.9, which would be for a year, would allow us to flex as we need to for cash flow. As Manager said, you know, there are going to be times when we have to pay out for expenses and then wait for FEMA reimbursement. And having the opportunity to flex a, a line of credit will give us that, those options. Then looking probably a year down the road, when hopefully things have sort of settled and we've got a better idea of where we are, the bond bank is offering really good. the bond bank is offering really good emergency borrowing options for multiple years to communities around the state associated with, with flood damage. So we would likely look to ultimately convert the LOC into a longer-term note with the, with the bond bank. So that's kind of the trajectory that we're looking at at the moment, so. I will also say that with regards to the abatements, the, the legislature, actually, back in 2012, following the Irene, they adopted, I can't remember the Act 67, which did two things. It put the state on, on the hook for the education portion of the abatements, and it also reimbursed communities for costs associated with borrowing. So we're, we're talking with the Speaker of the House, with various and sundry other people, about making sure that similar language is looked at early in the session in January. And so not only would that help us with, you know, cut that abatement number down considerably, but it would also make a difference if we, if we're borrowing with the line of credit and we're paying interest, it would, it would help offset that too. So we're hoping that we can push that through.
Counsel Boone?
Help my memory. Did we do the standard deduction for the ARPA yet? We did, okay, thank you.
We did.
But what we're talking about doing here is not spending the ARPA money. We're talking about essentially doing an inter-fund borrowing for cash flow purposes.
I, no, I, I realize that. I just wanted, I just couldn't remember if we had done that, so.
Thank you. And Slide 9. So, so what are some long-term solutions? I mean, they're, they're not great at this moment. I mean, the, the real solution is going to be some, some difficult budget conversations. But, you know, right now, I think some general parameters we would propose at the staff level anyway is limiting the use of ARPA and one-time resources for operational expenses. I, I think, you know, those, all that will do is create future fiscal cliffs that we need to dig out from under, through borrowing, bonding, or just hikes in the tax rate that, that I don't think we want to entertain. Clerk Dawes mentioned the Vermont Bond Bank. I had kind of flubbed that on the previous slide, but she mentioned that as a resource as well. And then, and I think realistically, there's gonna, we're gonna have to make a funding assistance request to the state to help mitigate this. Been in touch with my colleagues in Montpelier about this. I think that the need is going to be not just Berry City, but a lot of our other municipalities that were hit the hardest are going to probably have similar issues. And I think one thing I would, you know, in those conversations with the state, I think what will be important is talking about multi-year assistance. I, I think that, you know, help in year one will be great, and of course, we'll accept it. But all that becomes is a one-time resource, right? So I think if we can get sort of scaled down, sort of like a tax stabilization for Berry City, so that we can avoid those hikes in the tax rate. We can avoid, to the extent we can, having to borrow, take on more debt. So this is just an example, it's not what we're asking for. This is just sort of what something like that might look like, which is a big ask in year one, when we know it's going to be the hardest, and when the FEMA projects are going to come due, and then scaling that down so that the city can plan and do so, and, and get us back on our feet responsibly without making deep cuts to services, without having increased, increased tax rates that, that, that are unreachable, and without having to, you know, to sort of mortgage the future to, to make sure we can pay our bills. So that kind of assistance, I think, will be key. And as I said, I think for us, one of the things we'll push for is making sure that it's not one time, but sort of scaled down so that we can recover responsibly. And Clerk Dawes, I think, has mentioned that also advocating for abatement of education taxes at the state level, and some of the other things they've done in the past, which I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll have some receptive ears for. So that's the update. Happy to take any, any additional questions.
Excuse me, so is there any possibility of outside, of federal grants outside of FEMA that would provide other kinds of assistance that doesn't need a match?
There, there could be. There's, there could be some resources at the USDA. I think one of the things we learned from FEMA, though, it's that FEMA is like the last dollar in, so I'm not sure if, and I'm, and looking at, I don't know if you've, no, Don, or we can ask the people who are helping us with this. I know if it's FEMA's last dollar in, I don't know if they'll want to know other sources of funding that are coming in. That's, that's something we'll explore. I think for, you know, for us, that, what becomes a challenge, which is, it's as hard as that, they, they're very labor-intensive, a lot of those grants. And so, you know, the ability for, you know, Don or Janet, who manages the grants, to sort of go after many of those becomes, becomes limited at a certain point as well.
Thank you.
Counsel Lozón?
Thank you. So Nicholas, how do you, what do you look at when you, when you talk about one time? You know, because you, you said this a few times, and you, you talk about operational expenditures. I look at all of these property tax abatements, the buyouts, even the flood recovery expenses. The fact that we had a lot of people working overtime, that is absolutely going to tank this year's numbers. I look at all of those as one-time expenses, not operational. The part that I'm concerned about is, obviously, we're going to have to build into our budgets going forward any lasting effect on our property tax revenue. So if some of these buildings are gone and they're not coming back, well, obviously, that is something that we need to build into. That's what I would call operational revenue and operational expenses. But I look at these, I, I look at all of them as one-time expenses. Makes my head spin. Because I'm trying to think of what the charter says. I know some are going to be on the water in Seawide Side, Don. What does our charter say about our general fund? Can we run? We can run a deficit, but we got to have a plan.
We got to make it up. We, we have to make it up in the next year, or, or we go to the voters for approval to bond to cover it, to do long-term debt.
So that's the part that worries me, is making sure that people understand it, and that we don't find ourselves pursuant to a vote having to make up $3 million in one shot.
Yeah.
I mean, borrowing, and I don't know what the bond bank is talking about for term, but, you know, every day when I sit in my office, I look straight across, and on the wall, there's a 1927 flood bond, State of Vermont flood bond, that sits on the wall of my office in a frame. And, you know, we're just going to have to bond for this. I mean, if we had to bond $3 million over 30 years, roughly 175, 180,000 a year, and not, not where you want to be spending $170,000 a year, but this is our hand, this is what we've been dealt. Yeah, the thing that I worry about is, well, we can have that disco, you know, the, the transmission line that Senator Sanders got us the mat, you know, we had to come up with a match for that. And now we've got the auditorium complex, we have to come up with a match for that.
Public Works.
Yeah, so I think, I, I just, you know, I keep saying, I, I just don't see how we get away without bonding for this.
Yeah, I, I think bonding is probably in our future for, for a lot of those things. You know, certainly the Public Works garage.
Oh, yeah, and that too. Thanks. I feel better.
So I, I, I think there's, there's some bonding in our future. I, I think minimizing it to the extent we can is important to save the bonding for the things that, where, where nothing else is an option. What I worry about, and you're right, Counsel Lozón, a lot of those are, appear to be one-time expenses. What I worry about is that the cascading effect of that onto our, into the general fund budget, into general fund expenses because of, of the cash flow on it, right? So if we start running low on cash, what's going to take the hit is going to be something in our operational budget that we don't know yet, right? So I, I think that's where it'll get tricky, and, and the, it's not even a temptation to cut it, because we, we just won't have any other choice. But the, the result will be that we'll have to cut something that people really care about, because nothing else will be touchable, right? So I'm worried about the cash flow cascading into, into parts of our budget that we don't know are at risk yet.
Right.
And doesn't it depend somewhat, there isn't, isn't there like a ton of stuff we just don't know yet? Like, how many properties are going to come back? How many people are going to rebuild? So you don't, it's really hard to say, okay, here's where we are for the next two years. But then, we'll have a bigger grant list. We don't know that.
Yeah, no.
It's wise to be cautious about how much money we might borrow.
It's like, we're, we're trying to build an abatement program that is phased, because we don't know, you know, what the numbers, the worst-case scenario numbers that I've been giving Nicholas are 100% abatement for a year. But we, we won't be that, but we also don't think we're going to stick with 43. We think it may be double or triple that eventually. So a, as you said, we, we don't know, so it's hard to, you know, we're, we're taking sort of a, a worst-case scenario approach so that we can be prepared as much as we possibly can.
I, I think that's absolutely right. That's, we'll know a lot more in December with the abatements. We'll, we'll know a lot more as we start to get some, our FEMA projects approved, and so we'll start to get more granular. And, and we'll, we'll have to make a lot of decisions about the next budget, making some of these assumptions. But I think as we go into the next couple of months, we will, we will know a little bit better, a little bit more.
Thank you.
So for, right now, we'll be, and then Counsel Lozón, what you anticipate is a 2.18 million gap this fiscal year. Could get bigger, and that, so we're going to run a deficit. And the plan that staff is thinking about right now is going to the voters and bonding to cover that.
No, not, not, not at this point, no, no. So right now, our, our cash, so we are, right now, we, you're correct, Mayor, we're expect, right now, we're projecting 2.18, which is likely to grow as we get more data, as more FEMA projects start happening. So that's, that's the immediate, that's the immediate picture on '24. You know, '25 could also start to look different, because we might start to get 75% reimbursements on some of these FEMA projects. And all of a sudden, the revenue, the expense gap goes down, right, because those, the revenue's coming up. So '25 could possibly be better, right, as the FEMA money starts to roll in. So I don't, I don't think bonding is in our immediate future. I think the first options will be, as Clerk Dawes mentioned, the line of credit, probably then the Vermont Bond Bank, and then, and then probably bonding in that, in that order is what I would, is that right, Carol? Would you agree?
Yeah.
But you think you're pretty confident we are going to run a deficit, right?
It, it's, it's hard not to see landing anywhere other than that. And I'll look at Don and Carol, I think the, the numbers are pretty, pretty, are leaning that way.
You know, as things break our way, as the legislature passes language that, that reimburses us for education taxes, that'll make a huge difference. If they cover the cost of borrowing, that'll make a difference, you know? So as, as more FEMA projects are approved and for potentially a higher percentage, or we get other funding sources to pick up the gaps, that'll make a difference. So again, it kind of goes to what Counsel Stockwell said, we still don't know yet. We're, we're trying to, you know, put numbers to things that are pretty fluid.
And so the legislature starts in January, the fiscal year ends in July, so it's, that's going to be the key window to know some of the abatement questions, right?
Yeah, the, the, the nice thing is our payments to the school are quarterly, and, and they're, they have to be made within 20 days of each quarter. And then we do a true-up at the end of the year. So we, we will have to pay the school their full quarter after this installment, after November installment. Then who knows where we'll be as far as with legislative support after the, the February installment. They, they, they fast-tracked the, the legislation in 2012, so perhaps there will be something similar. So maybe for February, we'll already see an adjustment. And then for May, we would certainly see whatever all the rest of the adjustment was. So, so it, it probably, if it comes through, it'll be, certainly, it'll pay out for us in FY '24. So we'll be able to, to make those adjustments in '24, so.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, and, and that just lends itself to exactly what I was just about to say, you know, which is you have the advocacy in here for abatement of education taxes. But, you know, I, there are folks up here, you know, myself, Clerk Dawes, Counsel Lozón, others, who, you know, have experience working in the State House, doing the hardcore lobbying, things that are necessary. And I would just encourage the city to really do a full-court press lobbying effort when it comes. You're absolutely right, Nicholas, when you talked about the phased approach over a couple of years. Like, this is the year when we're going to have the most sympathetic ears in the State House. That's, it's, the whole state is focused on this right now, and there are going to be people who continue to focus on this long-term. But after this legislative session, the energy is going to really subside, and it's going to be less of a unified thing and become more of a pet project thing, you know? And I know Representative Williams is on here, and he just dropped a note that he's been listening and taking notes to this conversation about what to ask in January. You know, no one knows the effects of this better than Representative Anthony. But the only thing better than having two people advocating in the State House for Berry is having three, or four, or five, or six. So, you know, I'd really like to see a, a, a citywide official unified lobbying to, because there will be an omnibus recovery bill introduced in January. There will be other, there will be people trying to help us. And the more that we can be present in, in those conversations, the more that we can adequately communicate what we really need. It's, it's, there's no harm in asking for more, because if we don't ask for more, we're not going to get more. So I just like, you should be there as often as you can. We should be working very closely with the rest of our partners to just really nail this thing home.
And that's why, you know, I, I know Counsel Lozón, I know you, I know me, have been spreading out our, our advocacy. You know, I've been in touch with the League of Cities and Towns, and with Department of Taxes, and with the administration, and with our legislative representatives, and I, you know, trying to come at it from as many sides as possible.
They know we're here.
Yeah.
Already started.
And we have to be there.
I get it. I agree.
All right, any other questions on the, the budget?
No. I just want to say I'm really thankful that we have the people we have, that we have Don, we have Nicholas, we have Carol, we have backup. The depth seems really great.
All right, so that takes us to volunteer appointments. We have, first up is a Recreation and Parks Committee applicant, Cat Ellen. Welcome back. I noticed there's new graphic design on the PowerPoint, so it looks pretty good, so.
The city has been rebranded. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm up here all the time. What do you guys want to know now?
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, anything, then? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Oh, I did have to say one thing. I, I'm sure you do, but you, you understand the time requirement to, you know, to be an active member and productive member of the committee, and you're prepared to make that commitment.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Forgot to ask that.
I would like to ask if, for the benefit of social media tracking, that the committee actually be called Parks and Rec? It's like, it's kind of jokey, but I, I'm, I'm actually being serious to like, help gain the city traction on its new social Instagram account. It would be beneficial if, like, that hashtag could be used.
Sounds like a technical correction. I don't know.
Just to noodle it out there. And then I, I was curious, I watched council last week. Do all, um, do all of the committees have the opportunity to have high school student members?
Yeah.
Great. Have to go recruiting.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us to, oh, did I call the question?
I think so.
Yeah, I think you did. Okay, all right.
Hi, Justin.
So we have the DRB next, Jamie Bauer. Welcome, and welcome back.
Thank you.
This is for the at-large seat on the DRB.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Well, now we can have discussion. Tell us a little bit about yourself, even though we've met you before.
Yeah, so I won't take too long, but I have a master's degree in urban planning, development, and design. I've got over 20 years of community development experience at the municipal level, at a nonprofit level, and now for the state of Vermont, for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Very excited to hopefully serve this beautiful city.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you understand the, the time commitment, and the, you thought that through, attended a couple of meetings, and you're prepared to make that commitment?
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, we'll, we'll say for the DRB, it's just a really, particularly, as you know, very, very important that we have a quorum, because there's so many notification deadlines and costs associated with the hearings, so.
And then I'll, and that does have the online component and the in-person component both. And then I'll, and that does have the online component and the in-person component both, correct?
I'm looking to Plenary Director Chetney.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. Awesome.
All right. So we haven't voted yet, but, uh, we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Guys have it. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
Next up is Cow Pasture Stewardship Committee. We have Mark Martin, who was once on the Pastors and Trails Committee. And the cow, okay. So this is a re-up.
And we'll be consistent. Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second and any discussion. And maybe this is your opportunity to.
Okay. Well, just those of you who don't know me, I have a 30-year career with the U.S. Forest Service. I've done natural resource protection all my life. Um, I worked for the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And most recently I worked as the Conservation Stewardship Director for the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, which I just retired from about a year ago. Um, so that's my qualifications for that. I was previously on the Cow Pasture Stewardship Committee. Louis Herring twisted my arm and asked me to be on another committee, so I joined that, the Pastors and Trails. But, um, but I would prefer to get back to the Cow Pasture Committee. Yeah, that's it.
Awesome.
All right.
And you, you understand the time commitment, prepared to make that commitment? Awesome.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks for being here, Mark, and serving. Next up is Transportation and Public Works, and we have Steve McKenzie, who may know a few things about transportation.
Welcome stranger.
Move to deny.
You can't have a negative motion.
I withdraw my motion.
Being responsive to the manager's request to be brief, uh, my name is Steve McKenzie. You all know me. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second.
Hey, Ben's a booing.
Yeah, um, I'm going to follow up with what Tom always asks, except for is Claudia aware of the time commitments? And is she fully okay with it?
We had a full exploratory conversation. I have the, I have the, uh, good housekeeping seal's approval. I'm looking forward to serving.
Yeah.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Looked good, Steve. And Nicholas somehow is looking worse. Are we trying to tell him something?
In a couple of months.
So we're saying we have to keep Nicholas.
Steve's here was jet black when he took that job. Don't they say about the presidency?
So that takes us, uh, next up is Green Mountain Transit update on service reductions. And we have the Executive Director, thank you for being here, Clayton Clark, as well as our Washington County Representative on the Board of Commissioners, Board of Trustees, Board of, Board of Commissioners, um, Christian Meyer, Myers, right? Yeah, Meyer. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody, and it's good to see you all, although I apologize that I need to be here again to talk about service reductions. So, um, this, uh, seems like last year, but it's not like last year. And so last year, we had four drivers who departed our service roughly at the same time. That led to us needing to do temporary service reductions that lasted 11 months. And those only were restored this past June. This August, we had another four of our folks depart, um, which has resulted in service reductions that took effect on September 5th. The reason why this is not like last year is that this morning I've already signed the offer letter to the fourth person that would fill those positions. So we're already back up to assuming this person accepts. We're already back up to our required, um, staffing level in order to have full service. We will have the delay because it will take up to two months to get this person who came on board, does not have a CDL, just decided that they wanted to try being a bus driver. So to get them from zero to 60, so that they can be a bus driver, could take about two months. So I can tell you that we're, we are expecting that we're going to have service back, you know, this calendar year. So that it's not going to be 11 months like last year. I want to let you all know that we also, um, are committed to getting out of this cycle. And so, uh, we, in order for us to do our full schedule, we need 18 drivers. And, um, uh, and so we had 18 drivers when we restarted in June, and we were unable to get more drivers, which basically means that as soon as we have a bump in the road, the, we're, we're back to cutting service, which, you know, obviously is not where we want to be. So one of the things that, um, actually happened today, this morning at the GMT's, uh, board meeting, is that we've, um, once again, for the second time this year, are adjusting our, uh, rural wages so that we can attract folks, because we want to get, you know, beyond the 18. To give you an idea, and we, I should say that the union has to vote on it to approve. I don't imagine that they're going to turn down, um, an out-of-cycle wage increase. So, you know, but they still have to approve. The, uh, at the beginning of this year, uh, we offered starting CDL drivers $21.75 an hour to drive bus. And when this goes through, we'll be paying $28 an hour. So it's, it's a very significant, uh, investment that the company is making, because we're, we don't like to be here explaining why we aren't doing service. We would rather the service just be running. And, uh, so that is the good news with the bad news. Obviously do not like that, um, uh, that we are not running our full complement of service that we, you know, scheduled. But we are, uh, happy to see that the, um, uh, the folks are coming to us quicker. One of the things that I was also really happy to see is that, um, uh, because I know that when I was here last, we talked a little bit about the seasonal service and, and, uh, and the interplay there. One of the reasons why we're able to get to our four is that we had two folks that had applied to be seasonal staff. We convinced, asked them, could you please be full-time permanent staff? They agreed. And we made that switch. And so I bring that up also because I want to demonstrate that our priority is restoration of the, uh, the service in Washington County over our seasonal service. And so you can see that we chose, uh, to put people in, into Washington County service over, over the season. And so, um, so I'm going to throw that out to you. But I also know that you may want to talk about possibly becoming a member of the GMT Board of Commissioners in a different way than having, uh, Christian be the, uh, the representative for Washington County. And I know that prior to the flood, uh, we were going to be talking to you all about restoring the first and last routes of the day on the city commuter. And so those things are still, uh, out there to be resolved. And so happy to talk to you about whatever is on your mind.
Thank you. So with Counselor Booton, then Counselor Dearing?
So restoration, not pre-pandemic restoration, correct? So regarding that first and last bus trip, because it, based on conversations I've had with Jesse, you miss the connector going to Burlington, correct?
You just miss an earlier run. It means that you're going to get to Burlington later in the morning.
Well, what time would you get to Burlington later in the morning?
I believe that it would be 8:10 or, and, and the eight o'clock range, which clearly.
Would you pass that? It'll, you know, get into work at, at a reasonable time at eight o'clock. And, and I, I've sent you an email about it, and I don't understand why we can't just get that one, that one, you know, trip in the morning.
Well, I can tell you that the, the, uh, the decision that my board, uh, similar to Nick, I, uh, you know, I run a municipality and report to a board, and our board has made the decision, uh, that they want to review that as a new service request. Um, and, uh, and so that requires a, a process to be followed, um, that we were going to be starting. I think that, uh, we had already had plans to have, um, Berry City, uh, come and talk to us at our July meeting. Of course, uh, the week before that is when the flood happened and, and then we put things on hold for, for obvious reasons.
Counselor Dearing, and then Counselor Shombel.
Two questions. First one, uh, so you have four drivers leaving. Can you possibly explain why they're leaving? Was it transfer? Was it, uh, retirement?
Yeah. So, uh, last year it was four retirements. Uh, this year we had, um, one transfer to St. Albans, uh, one promotion, and then two folks, uh, who are originally from Ohio, there's a married couple. And they decided that they wanted to, uh, start a family and move back to Ohio, where they have the free, uh, grandparent babysitting. So, uh, very happy that the departures don't appear to be because we hate this job. It just seems to be sort of normal life.
Second question is, why is this, uh, first round looked at as a, an additional or an adding to the service as opposed to a restoration of service? It was a service that was provided before. It's a service that's very valuable and important to the residents here in Berry. And we just kind of need to get back there. So I'm curious why we're at this starting point now, um, instead of continuing services that were already in place.
So there were multiple services that were reduced in 2020, uh, right at the very beginning of the, the pandemic. And, uh, another municipality, uh, pushed back and said, hey, we want this restored. And my understanding is that the board made a decision that they had to go through the, uh, the same process. And so that they wanted it to be equitable, uh, here since, and so the other municipality, it's not secret, it was Milton. And, uh, and so they wanted us to follow the same process that Milton followed. And, uh, unfortunately Milton's request for the service restoration was, was not approved. So, uh, I do just want to let folks know that.
I guess that's where I'm kind of confused is, is this was a service that was already provided. I, I understand that you have a precedent at this point now, that you guys took a service away, and then for that service to be offered again, now there's more hoops in order to, you know, to get that done. How can we cut the red tape and get this done? It seems to me like it's bureaucracy and we're not serving the people that need to be served the most.
I think that, uh, personally, I'm very sympathetic to that position. And, uh, certainly as a new general manager, tell, uh, hesitant to tell the board that, you know, that they shouldn't, uh, not follow their own policies. And, uh, so, uh, so I'm going to defer to their decision.
All right. I said Counselor Shombel, then Jesse Rosado, and then Counselor Booton.
I, I just want to start by thanking you for getting the ball rolling and looking like it's coming in a positive direction. I think that's great. And I laud you for raising salaries for folks to make it more attractive. It looks like that's what we're going to have to do everywhere.
Yes.
My big concern is that Berry is one of the poorest communities in the state.
Yes.
We have some of the highest poverty rates. The needs are extraordinary.
Yes.
And I hate to say it, as I recall, 100 years ago, when I was younger, this all started with the needs for various communities to have public transportation, because there wasn't any. And I think it started in central Vermont. I think that was where the big push was, as I recall. And so it's pretty infuriating to know that, I'm going to be a brat here. Sweet little Burlington gets what they need. Stowe gets what they need. You know, they got more clout than we do. We don't look as good, but the needs are huge and it needs to be taken care of.
I, I see, uh, yeah, I'll just keep going in order, but, um, Jesse Rosado, then Counselor Booton, and then Christian. And Clayton, I, I definitely appreciate your candor about the policies. Certainly this body has had a hard time following, following its own policies at times too. And that's sort of a board dynamic that happens. It's an unfortunate one, but.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. And I, and I don't think this panel is complete without me coming up here as well. So I feel, and, and I want to start by saying I've had good conversations with both of these men. I respect them, uh, and appreciate them. So, um, even though I'm going to take slightly different positions than what they talk about, I want to make sure that they know and you guys know that I'm not speaking personally here. But the reality is, is to Counselor Dearing's, um, question, the reason why, um, there's all this red tape. They have a heavy-handed board. We all watched Clayton say, here's my recommendation. I recommend you guys in this leadership committee to restore the first and last run. Our city manager, uh, gave me that video. I'm sure he could give it to anybody who hasn't seen it. And so the, and, and flatly it was rejected by, um, Austin Davis, the board chair. And the reason why it was rejected, which really surprised me, was because, you know, if we make them go through the new, uh, service request process, we might be able to write a few, few thousand dollars, a couple of few thousand dollar grants and get more money. That's what that decision was based on. And that surprises me because when we read the Times Argus, we see that they just got 48 and a half million new dollars in transportation budget debate in the last legislative session. There's more to going on than just driver shortage. And I think it's important to have a conversation about Stowe, and I just read right up on it just the other day. You know, Stowe Resort used to be its own separate entity. Stowe Resort was, uh, and, and of course all ski pass holders, they get a ski pass for one resort. They were acquired by Vow Resorts. Vow Resort has resorts all over the country. And when, and they also have a very popular plat, a pass where you can buy for one rate and ski at any single, any resort Vow owns. When that, when Stowe was incorporated into their thing, may, like, I don't know the numbers, but huge amounts of people that normally wouldn't have a ski pass at Stowe, all of a sudden had a ski pass at Stowe. It created transportation problems, um, on Route 108. It, the, the, the city had a big discussion about it, just like you guys have here with all the different problems that arise here. And when that happened, they, they put a parking, um, they put a parking fee of $30 for a day. And I don't know, it's, it's like a whole thing. And the whole idea was they were going to raise this pool of money. And then they were going to find a solution that would satisfy the city because of the traffic problem and parking problems that were happening in Stowe. And so I don't think, I think that there's a direct correlation between the timing of these cuts last year and what we're dealing with to this year with, because they, because basically GMT, as I saw, reading the minutes from all the different committee meetings, they went and they chased that money. Said, yeah, we got you guys. And it's, and, 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 and I know that there's going to be suggestions of, hey, this is different, whatever. But the reality is, is it, it's, this is basic math. When you're cutting services here and you're increasing services there, that, that really is like, that's, that's really what looks to me like what's going on. We also heard from the Recovery Coach last week, and he has a lot of experience with the Medicaid rides. And talking to him, it sounds like these Medicaid rides are pretty inefficient in, in, in terms of, you know, they, they're going to pick you up, take you to your hospital appointment. No one else can be on the bus. They got to wait for you, bring you back, you know? And of course, again, that's like chasing money, but it's not, it, but it, but it's, but it's pushing these resources that used to haul people en masse up and down the Berry Mount Pilgrim Road. And that puts them, and, and, and it's transferring them to these other money-making entities. It's almost like our transportation system is changing. I think it's important to know that this bus route that we're talking about here was a lifeline to this community for more than a dozen years. No leadership team in the history of GMT, going back at least one dozen years, ever touched those routes ever, uh, under, under all the conditions that could rise and fall, you know, labor shortages, recessions, uh, different things that would come up. That's never been touched. And somehow or another, right now, we've, it, it really feels like what GMT is doing is chasing money and changing the way public transportation works in the state of Vermont and here in Washington County. And it feels like they're, they're, um, and it feels like they're, especially some of their board members are, are really, really focused on raising more money and not providing service to the community. And that's concerning. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So I think I had Counselor Booton and. So I think Counselor Booton and Christian Martin, I'm sure you'll want to have a reply to that. And then Counselor Wazak, so Counselor Booton.
Yeah, so this is a really tough spot for you to be in. Cause we're, we're wanting to dump on, and it's unfortunate because you're here. Unfortunate that you're taking it. And I'm sorry. But you know, the, the problems that have been addressed is absolutely accurate. I mean, the budget has gone up, correct, for the last three, four years? Correct? Your budget has?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah. And our service has decreased in Berry City.
Budget as far as the assessment?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about your general budget.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Regarding Stowe, the, the minimum, I mean, the household income in Stowe is like seventy-one thousand dollars. And Berry City is like thirty-nine. They can afford their own bus service. The, I got to touch on what happened, I think it was last, early in the, the year when we went to the board. Like the majority of city council was at your board meeting. And I actually walked away from that, in thirteen years I've been on this council, the first time I've ever felt like dissed by another entity. And I remember calling Michael and saying, I can't believe how that went down. It was, it was frustrating and I don't know why Mr. Davis is not here tonight. But boy, it feels, it feels like, feels like I want to say something that I shouldn't be saying while on a live mic. And that's really frustrating. And you know, what would it take? I mean, you know, to tell us that we have to become a board member, that's not going to happen. I mean, I won't support doing that. You know, we're talking about individuals that can't get that bus. And I, and I understand, you know, you can be there at eight fifteen or eight-ten or whatever. And then it's another half an hour to get wherever you need to go. And more than likely, if it's, if it is like a, a lower income job, or not a lower income job, but less.
Low wage.
Low, or whatever, yeah. You know, they have to be there by a certain time. And that certainly doesn't help when they can't get there. You know, and I, I sent you the email and asked, why couldn't you like set up something where you do a, you know, pay someone to pick people up early in the morning? And yet was that also denied by the board too?
And so I will apologize if I didn't respond back. And that I do know that for a totally separate conversation another day, microtransit is something that Berry is, is scheduled to, me to come back later and ask if you want microtransit because we did a study a few years ago. And that would be helpful potentially in those situations. But no, I can tell you that I didn't, you know, act upon that request with the board. So I apologize for that.
Christian.
Thank you. First, thank you for having us. I wanted to speak from the board briefly to say the level of support for Clayton is high. Since he's come in, he's really done an excellent job as a manager, pursued creative ideas to take on some of these problems when they came to his attention. He's, he's built a good team here in Washington County, adding some, some talent in our, our operation manager, Tim Bradshaw, who's in. So I'm optimistic about the direction we're heading in, in terms of management here. Today at the board meeting, when this proposal was brought up to raise rates in the effort to break the cycle, as Clayton put it, it was unanimous support for, for Washington County. And that support was, came from both the other rural, the rural areas Franklin County, Grand Isle and La Moya County, as well as from Chittenden County. So I, I think there's, there's a willingness to listen to your points that I've brought forward. No, Nicholas knows there, that certainly I'm there to help as need be in the new service application. And I'm optimistic about the direction things are going.
Counselor Wazak next, and I think Eric Arail, and then Counselor Lozong.
Yeah, so just to, you know, I don't necessarily expect an answer to this right now because I want to give you time to think about it. But just to like cut through all of it, the board's the problem. You're not the problem. You're trying to get it done. The board is the problem. You get a win, you have to have a majority of votes on a board to get anything done. And the board is standing in our way. So, you know, just anything that like, for lack of a better term, how do we get to the board? What do they need to hear? What data do they need from us? What stories do they need from us? What support do you need from us to be able to go and challenge the board and fight back against those precedents that are incorrect? You know, I think that we've all learned to have flexibility in response to disasters. And this is not, this is in response to COVID, but it's sort of, it's not flexibility. So, you know, I, if I was asked in a public session, like how to get to the council? I don't know, that'd be like spilling my guts. But, you know, so, but the point remains that like anything that we can do to break the blockade that exists on the board, I want to be able to do that. And if that's an official communication from the city, great. If that's one-on-one conversations with board members, great. But, you know, I, the board and us, I think, are pretty united in supporting you. But, but, but we keep hitting the same logjam of they just won't pass what we need them to pass to, for the city to operate the way it needs to.
I'm going to speak a bit more transparently and bluntly than prudent. I'm going to tell you that the, the way Berry City approached GMT in February greatly offended. But I mean, that's, that's why they're going to say, oh, no service. So these are people, these are volunteers. They're paid zero to do this. And to have people insult them before even a negotiation happens, you know, I think is part of the problem. I think part of the problem was, is that when we reached out to Berry City to inquire about where is this coming from? We were advised it wasn't coming from the city. And it was coming from an individual. So it was a surprise to us that you were on that call that was so offensive. Because when we asked, could you please have a representative from the city confirm that this is actually a city issue? We never got that response. And so, so the well was poisoned from the beginning. And I think that I'm glad to see that we have overcome that. And I don't pick up any feelings now that, that that is what is impeding progress. But I do think that we have, you know, the leader of the, the board, who I work for, you know, feels that we should follow a certain process to examine service. And I will be happy to work with you through that process. We were going to start that process a couple of months ago. And also, you know, one of the reasons why I haven't worked on this is because we also were impacted by the flood. And we had our Berlin facility flooded. And, you know, frankly, that has been where my time has been in, in Washington County efforts. I do want to, to clarify a little bit from what we heard from Jesse. The forty-eight, I wish that GMT had a forty-eight million dollar budget. The forty-eight million dollars is for the entire public transit throughout the state. GMT gets about half of that, right about half of the rides. And when it comes to the non-emergency medical transport, that is a labor-intensive business. And it takes a lot of our resources. Getting somebody to dialysis, you know, we actually restarted that service immediately after, within twenty-four hours of our, actually less than twenty-four hours, within twelve hours of our building being drained of water, we had staff out doing medical transports. Because if somebody doesn't get dialysis, they die. And what I can tell you is that Vermont has committed to what's called braided service. And braided service is where you don't have a separate company that runs your fixed routes and your on-demand transit, like the medical transit. Vermont, this is Vtrans, when I say Vermont, they, they feel that having a braided service where the same provider is doing both is what makes sense. Now, unfortunately, that means that when there are staffing problems, that fixed route sometimes ends up being impacted.
I don't love all of that answer, but I appreciate your candor.
Eric Arail, and then Counselor Lozong.
So let me just make some comments because I've been, I've been following My Ride for a long time now. Almost five years of working in Montpelier. And the, the thing about My Ride, working in Montpelier and working in Berry, is whenever there is a kink in the service, I always hear we're working on it. With My Ride, you have to have a phone. And not everybody has a phone. A working phone. And with My Ride recently, during the flood, if you will, everybody is put on hold or has to leave a message. And five years ago, we were told that there would be public phone service put in many locations in Montpelier. I have yet to see that happen. That was five years ago. So you talk about microtransit in Berry, and that's not going to happen. So you're talking about staff shortages? That's still not going to happen. So I don't want to hear that these kinks are going to be worked out when we're still working on the kinks in Montpelier. So what I hear is just lip service. And I'm sorry to sound so angry, but we've been trying to work on those kinks for the past five years in Montpelier. So you're saying that these kinks are going to be worked out magically in Berry with My Ride? Or, or microtransit? It's not going to happen. Thank you.
I don't think I'm saying that the kinks are going to be worked out. I'm just saying that there may be a time in the future when Berry City may want to consider that service. And I can tell you that it's, it's different from fixed route. I'm not, personally, I'm not convinced that it's a, a direction that we need to move in. But I can tell you that's where the political support is right now on the statewide level, which is why the state looked at twelve different municipalities last year as potential microtransit places to study for future expansion to microtransit.
Correct. It's been, the kinks are being tried and worked out for the past five years in Montpelier, and they're still not worked out. So you're expecting Berry to wait another five years? It's not going to happen.
I'm not expecting Berry to wait another five years. I'm happy to take my lumps, but I'm, but please don't put words in.
Yeah, fair, fair. Counselor Lozong, you were up next.
Uh, thanks. And thanks for being here.
Yep.
You having fun so far? Look, you know, none of this is personal. You're a good man. You are. I did not attend that board meeting that you felt was less than respectful for that very reason. You know, I've tried to be measured in this whole thing. Jesse and I have had a lot of conversations over the last year. Obviously, this is something he's very passionate about. And as he went through the issues with, with staff, that resonated with me as a businessperson. And, and as someone who knows that everyone is, including the city of Berry, is struggling with staffing. So as you were going through that, I, I just wasn't going to pile on. Now you're at full staffing level. You are. And, you know, if your board wanted a yes man, they should have just bought a mirror. You have an opinion, you're a smart guy. I understand exactly what you want to do. You know, I don't surround myself with people who just agree with me all the time. They don't make you better. So, you know, I guess the message, and, and as I sit here, the last time I spoke to Jesse, he talked about increased service in Stowe and reduced service in Berry. And I trust but verify, no offense Jesse. And that's exactly what happened. You know, people who are skiing down a mountain got placed before people are trying to put food on the table and support their families. You know, that's not right. And maybe your board needs to understand you are supported by public dollars. And those public dollars, if you're not spending, if you're spending them on people shushing down a mountain, maybe we ought to reallocate those public dollars. And I'm not saying this to you, Clayton, you know that because you get it. But the message to your board needs to be, this can quickly turn into a street fight. You know, now I'm passionate about it because I've looked into it. You're fully staffed. I'm not going to heap more pressure on you. But the message is really simple. I mean, how much more simple do we need to make it? Restore the first and last runs. It's all we want. And then you'll never, well, I shouldn't say. But it'll, it'll be a while, but we'll be really, you know, it's just that for me, and holy cow, you, you know who I am. And when I look at this and say, man, when you can make me see the inequity? Holy mackerel, there's something way off kilter.
I, you know, Jesse talks about the fact that GMT does look for revenue. And there's, it's not lost on me that the reason why GMT even operates down here is because the previous public transit provider went bankrupt. So we have to look for revenue. And what my finance director would tell me is that all of the money that we get from Stowe reduces your assessment. Because we use that as local match here in rural. So right now Berry is paying about six percent of the cost of service in Berry. And the reason why that's not higher is because of the hundreds of thousands of dollars we get from Stowe and Sugar Bus each year.
And while I appreciate that, why don't you give us a number? And let us decide whether the first and last bus run is worth it. Instead, you know, they're, they're playing these, you know, and you know, I'm not saying this to you, Clayton. You know, I respect you, but, but, you know, just be straight with us. And if the price tag is X, then we can fight with Jesse or he'll come in here and twist our arm until we, you know, until we approve the X. But we're not even getting those options.
And I, I will say that part of the going through the new service process is costing that out. And so that we would be able to provide you with, this is the cost. And so, yes, I made a foolish recommendation early in my career at GMT to recommend that we not follow a policy and restore service. And so you know where, where my thoughts are as far as that service. But there's sort of a method to the madness.
I'd, I'd be happy to visit with your board. I'll be respectful, I'll be professional. And if they want to put us on the agenda, I don't want this two-minute stuff. I don't. It won't end well if that happens.
I totally agree. And I think that I want to make sure that I'm clear that the, the actual meeting itself, we were surprised that there was counselors on there, but the meeting was, was not where the issue had lied in. The issue had lied in is that there was a lot of argumentation that happened before even getting to that point that had sort of, with, with nobody who was a council member.
Yeah, Counselor, I'm sorry.
Jesse. I think we should just address it right now. And I spoke to you on the phone when I was out in Texas and doing some stuff. And what he's talking about is when I recommended, that I, that I went and asked him, hey, can you put Berry City on the agenda? And I got a one-word reply, and I'm happy to share the emails from Austin Davis. No. There's a public comment period, you know? And that, and so I said, wait, I, we have counselors and mayor, you know, like people that want to talk about this. Like you guys are a, a, an entity that's full of public money. Like we're the public, like can't we get a chance to talk to your people? And so there's no doubt that that conversation went sideways. And look, you know, I own a construction firm. I deal with people, you know, homeowners, architects, you know, different, different tradesmen, you know? I mean, sometimes like people have tough conversations. And that, and that was, and that was a little bit of a match between Austin and I. But the fact is, is that he knows that this board came to, that you folks and people of the city of Berry, not just Jesse, came and were advocating for our folks. And, 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 and you know what? Like what I find him is kind of petty and it's time for him to put his big boy pants on and just get over it. People say this stuff to me all the time that I don't like, you know? And, and, and I work through it and I get on the other side of it and I make things work because it's my responsibility. They have a moral obligation and a responsibility. They use those public dollars well and to, to, to make this, you know, make this work for the communities that they serve. And I think that I agree with Clayton. And I think that I agree with Clayton and I like Clayton. Our problem is with Austin Davis. And he has taken it personal and he has gotten petty and he has pushed back against Berry. And that's very, very clear for me. And I tell you, someone with that level of maturity and that level of like not being able to get past that and make this work probably isn't the best person to be the chair of a board of something that is dealing with millions and millions of dollars of public money.
Yeah, I just want to point out again, I feel bad for you. But that being said, so we sent out our letter on February 9th. I just double checked with the city manager and we showed up at that meeting at 3:21 on March 21st. So that's almost like a month and a half later. So it wasn't, it wasn't like we came out of nowhere to address the board. And again, I don't remember any of us being disrespectful in that board meeting. So for the board to get a little pissy about it would be really strange to me because I've seen people come here and get angry with us. And it doesn't, you know, again, 13 years and I, that was like the worst experience I've, well, it's not the worst experience. That was obviously hyperbolic. But it was, it was probably the most disrespectful as a city council experiencing. And I was here when another member of a community literally went down the aisle trying to make us say something that was just, it was uncomfortable. But yeah.
Excuse me, Mayor, but Janice had her hand up for a while.
So I'll reiterate that there was nothing that any of the councilors, you know, did at the board meeting itself that was the issue. And you know, I would be happy for the emails, you know, to be released because I think that what you'll see then is us saying that if Berry City, the city wants space on the agenda, then somebody from Berry City has to reach out to us, not a community member. Had a council member or the mayor's office or Nicola said, we would like space on that agenda, we would have put, you know, space on the agenda for you.
I make a motion to request have city staff reach out to the GMT to put us on the agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Is there further discussion? I see Cat and then no discussion in the motion, discussion on the motion?
I.
I was just going to say, there are ways to apply pressure to an organization very publicly without it having to be council chairman. There are three news stations in Burlington that are always looking for relevant news. There's the Great Will State Podcast, like there's a lot of ways to make this a very reachable issue that would apply public pressure with people that are professional storytellers that takes the issue outside of Berry City. And that's an unfortunate thing for GMT, but I do think that it's very possible to have this become much more prevalent as far as Vermont news, especially with polar season kicking off soon, people are going to be way less sympathetic to Stowe very quickly.
So we have a motion in a second, Council Wazak.
Yeah, so I'm going to vote for the motion, but my only question is just to Council Booton's point, isn't that what we did? Did we not send a letter from the administration?
So the letter didn't, the second one did request it, but the first one didn't. I just double checked with that. But the, I mean, what the motion is basically saying is.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that point.
And just Berry City was going to be on the July meeting. You don't have to do a motion for you to be on the next meeting because it's basically, there's a standing invitation to the mayor and Nicholas that whenever you all are ready to reengage, we're ready.
The motion is more of a public stance.
Understood.
That, yeah, in my opinion.
Okay, I see Council Stockwell, then Council Dearing.
I think Council Dearing is probably for me.
Yes, my big concern with this entire thing tonight has been that you made it very clear, Clayton. And again, you know, I appreciate what you're doing. I don't appreciate what your board's doing with, you said they were offended and hurt and now they have grudge. You made it very clear that we didn't do anything that would upset them in the meeting. We went there very respectfully and cordial. And yet they have a grudge. You made it very clear that they're not going to restore that service because they are, in my opinion, being petty and can't get past the bureaucracy of whatever they're seeing. So just wanted to make that very clear that that's the site that I'm seeing this from is that they're offended and hurt and holding a grudge against Berry City, one of the poorest communities in the state. So essentially they're going to crack the whip at the poor guy because we can't afford to, I don't know.
So I clearly stated before that I felt that we had moved past that. So I think that there was a point where that may have been true. I don't see that at this point. Certainly you're entitled to feel that way. I think that if, I don't believe that the GMT board is going to have their personal feelings about what happened this spring influence the decision about the first and last runs.
Council Stockwell.
I retract what I haven't said.
All right. So I think we have a motion in a second and further discussion. I'll start with Christian.
Just to state the obvious, as you're representing one law court, I can also go through the city of Berry City, one of the candidates. Other than I was acting at the time, I mean, there is interest in that. Don't hesitate to use me as a resource.
Jesse Rosado.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on something that I heard Clayton say and just be clear what we're talking about, this rift that happened. A private citizen reached out to the board to try and like get, to highlight a problem that we're having in the city with the, with the public transportation. The board chair tried to blow me off and just say no. And I didn't let him do that and that hurt his feelings. And that's why we're having trouble with that board member.
It's unacceptable.
That board member reached out to two people sitting here to ask if Jesse Rosado had any affiliation.
I mean, I don't understand the value in this stuff. I mean, we got a job to do and I'm ready to do it, but we're just rehashing who hurt whose feelings. And with all due respect to both of you, I just don't see the value.
I don't see the value either, but you allowed Jesse to provide that, so I'm going to provide a rebuttal.
That's fair.
There was two, there was two people that were approached that are sitting in front of me to ask if Jesse Rosado had a relationship with the city of Berry or Ingraham Transportation. And they were told no. That is why then Austin said, when you get a member of your council to ask, you'll get a place on the agenda. That is reasonable. If you want to choose to be offended by that, go right ahead. But it is reasonable when somebody claims that they're representing the city and then you talk to people who have official positions with the city and they say, no, that person has no position within the city, that to then ask for a person within the city to ask for the space on the agenda, that is reasonable.
All right. So yeah, and I think just in the interest of, well, Council Dearing has called the question, but also in focusing on the future and solutions, that we call this question, we get in front of the board and we start talking about the restoration of service and potentially microtransit options. And I know there's some interaction with Capstone's, it's called Gopher, the Gopher Project. So that might be a conversation for another time, but certainly something that I think we'd be interested in learning about as a board.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make sure it's very clear? Never once did I ever say that I was representing the city. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. Never once did anybody, you know, I came to them as a private citizen based on a conversation we had in this council that we talked about coming, never once did I ever say, I'm a representative of this city. However, if you're a company with millions of dollars of public money, you don't treat like the public rudely. You know what I'm saying? Like you respond to the public. That's, that would make sense.
Okay. We have a motion in a second and could you read back the motion?
To have staff reach out to request time before the board.
And could we, would it be a friendly amendment just to make sure that that's the clear what our intention is? And that's to discuss restoration of the first and last run.
First, yeah, first and last runs.
So there's clarity on that. Okay, is that okay with the secondary?
That would you, who you, Council Lozón?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you so much for your time and your candor and your service to the state.
I appreciate everyone's.
Sorry Clayton. Thank you.
I love robust, fun government stuff. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Why you have the job Clayton.
Thank you. Yeah. All right. So that takes us to our first reading and public hearing warrant for 645. We're a little late on that one. On the accessory dwelling unit zoning provision brought before us by the planning commission. So this is a second loop back after the prior action to send it back to the planning commission was rescinded. I don't know if the, who wants to represent the amendments, the acting planning commission chair or the planning director, or if we're just ready to call the question given that there's been already a lot of discussion.
I make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. There's a second. Is there further discussion?
Any takers on 3401? That's. I, no, I mean, I don't want to beat it to death, Mayor, but I just, I just have an issue with giving ADUs. I am solidly in favor of expanding the use of ADUs throughout the city. I'm just a little lukewarm on zero parking requirements. And under 3401, we talked about this at length in the last meeting, so I'm not going to go all into it. But you know, under 3401, if you don't have the parking, if you were doing a three bedroom accessory unit, you'd have to provide 1.4 parking spaces. If you can't provide any parking spaces at all, 3401 provides, it provides a mechanism for the applicant to go to the DRB and say, look, I, you know, my tenant doesn't need a parking space and I don't have it anyway. Can you give me a waiver? And again, to simply say, because it's an accessory dwelling unit, you don't have to consider parking at all in some of our more congested neighborhoods. I just think it's a mistake. So, but if no one goes with me on it and there's four votes in favor of this, that's the way life goes sometimes.
Are there any other points that haven't already been raised? Council Booton.
I want to know if there's a possibility we could just put one parking spot in. Just one. I mean, the fact is, is that the ADU unit is going to be with owner occupied, so more than likely they will have an extra parking spot. And I think that, right, I understand that, but maybe they don't. And having that in there would, would help that. And that would be my ask, but I'm sure it's not going to be a friendly.
We have a motion. Second, is there further discussion?
Could we offer an amendment?
Yes.
For the motion? Then fine, I will offer the amendment that it be that we alter, and I apologize, I had it right here in front of me and now all of a sudden I don't, that it be subject to I guess for the time being, I, I don't want to send this back to the beginning, but we could perhaps have the planning commission, because Michael said one, I don't even have an objection to that. A three bedroom accessory dwelling unit with one parking space, not 1.4.
Are you offering an amendment?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying hard. I'm trying really hard. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to say that we, that we not make it exempt, that we strike where it says shall be exempt from the minimum parking requirements for residential uses of 3401. So we strike that section, but I'm doing that recognizing that it's going to need a little bit more work. I don't want to hold this up, but 3401 would make them do 1.4 and I'm fine with your one. So that's my amendment is that we change, well, what is currently line five so that it says meet the minimum parking requirements for residential uses of section 3401, but wanting a little bit more work by the planning commission. That will put it, that will put ADUs, bring ADUs to a second reading so that people can get going and then we can entertain a change from the planning commission. So ADUs would only be one. That's, that's my long game.
So there's a motion essentially to remove the only substantive change that isn't already altered by general law that the planning commission has forwarded. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I'm going to call division. Council Dearing?
Aye.
Council Shawn Bell?
Is this for the amendment?
For the amendment.
Nay.
Council Booton?
Aye.
Council Lozón?
Aye.
Council Stockwell?
Nay.
Council Wazak?
Nay.
Naye. So that takes us back to the original motion for the changes as presented by the planning commission. Is there any further discussion?
You say, it's a good old fashioned policy debate and disagreement. It's so refreshing just to have real policy debates and disagreements.
I think there may be a comment online.
Oh, yeah. Amy Gelford.
I realize this is kind of after the fact, but just kind of a clarifying question. For the part that removes the requirement to share a driveway with the primary dwelling, does that open up having a second curb cut? Or then does the curb cut regulation in 3104 apply?
No curb cut, no curb cut regulation. The applicant would simply need to demonstrate that there is one parking space available for the ADU.
Okay, so does anyone think they could make a second?
I'd look to our planning director who administers these day in and day out.
He's right.
Yes, I am.
They have to show one parking space for the ADU if it's not on site. A curb cut is a whole different animal. So if a single family owner occupied homeowner wants to have a second curb cut, that is a process outside of permitting an ADU. Okay, I guess I was just wondering about that because there are plenty of houses in my neighborhood and the only way they could provide more parking would be through a second curb cut. So when I was trying to imagine how this would look in the real world, that's what was coming to mind for me. I have a three bedroom house. It has parking for one small car off street. So I guess it seems like a lot of the conversation is assuming that current houses are already and already have the ideal number of parking and they don't necessarily. And then I'm also confused because I thought the 1.4 rounded up to two.
I round down to one.
Okay.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. There's no further discussion. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of approving the amendment as presented unanimously from the planning commission.
Motion, not the amendment.
The motion, yeah. Well, amendment to the, yeah, I'm sorry, the amendment to the unified development regulations.
Right. Approve and move to the second reading and public hearing.
Yeah. Say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it, motion carries, we go to second hearing. That takes us to our item 8F on our new business, which is an appeal to counsel of the mayor proclamation to request approval of the demolition of 561 North Main Street. Who's here to speak to the proposal?
Or Dave.
My name is David Ehr. Those of you that don't know me, let's see, I got a request for a concession to be made. I've read a little bit this evening, actually a lot about red tape. I've seen how this board has struggled with the critical issues and obviously the city here is confronted with a disaster of which a person has six. of which a person has six commercial properties uh, right here in downtown. I know firsthand just how devastating it is, guys. And you don't begin to realize just how bad things are until you have to get into the structure of a property. This particular property that I'm requesting we be allowed to demolish. I have uh, after my insurance company looked at it, I contacted James Martin from Northern Pro Builders. And his critical view of the property was that this is a tear down property, David. This is not a re, rebuilder. The timbers on the underside of the property can be punctured sufficiently, almost to the point where he's advised me not even to enter the property. Others have looked at it from the city committee. And so I'm confronted with a situation of having a property. Now what is it that I, I need to do? I know the responsible thing for us to do is to unfortunately remove that income production. And, but then you're left with, okay, what now are our options? And how is it that we can make the best of the worst situation? In my repair business, EV cars are coming in more now than ever before. I'm fortunate enough to have a good customer base that now actually is transitioning into EV and hybrid. So I've concluded that the best use of this property going forward, being that we are now in the final stages of completing repairs to the Ernie's, what used to be Ernie LeBlanc's repair facility. That I would like to propose that I put in uh, charging stations. Starting with three stations, one being a four eighty. That is a instant uh, charge of uh, an hour from zero. To include two other stations, which is a stage two and a stage one. What this is going to allow us to do is service those individuals in the EV sector. There's very few stations in the central Mont area. I believe there's one at the restore and then there's one at Cody Chevrolet. So my proposal to utilize this property is to make it a, a immediately a, a three station location with the ability to expand it to potentially as many as ten. And the restructuring of our facility, our sales lot will be putting one, if not two, in at the sales lot. Just knowing and understanding that EVs are going to be a part of our business, including in repair, but also in sales. So you know, it's a, it's a uh, it's the right thing to do is to embrace what you understand is coming towards us. And EV is going to be in everybody's life if it isn't already. And I, I kind of look forward to it. I'm excited for the fact. Because it's, it's a sense of optimism as opposed to the, the difficult scenario we've been handed with five of our six properties being all but dis- demolished. So I'm requesting that the committee can make a concession. I understand that it's the desire not to uh, remove properties from the tax roll. But what this will do is this is going to allow us to bring in additional mechanical talent. That's going to be above average in income. It's going to bring into our city individuals that are above average in, in income. Uh, we always encourage them to go downtown. And that's a sector of the business where individuals are here for an hour or two. And so they do take the opportunity to walk downtown. They do take, and we will provide alternative transportation for them to do that. And so I look forward to collaborating with some of the businesses downtown and, and making uh, coupons and other things available and try to just do our part and uh, responsible community member.
Well, Dave, thanks for coming in and sharing pictures and talking about uh, what you're finding in the property. Is your wife Kathy?
She is.
She makes the best key lime pie probably in all of New England, I think.
Her pecan is really outstanding.
Yeah. And you own the auto shop across the street from this house, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And it's certain, this house is a rental property right now?
It is. It was.
Okay, it was. And then, so and the health officer uh, has been coordinating with your building inspector? And it sounds like they're not of the same opinion uh, on the, on the structural integrity of the home?
I, I would say, so Chief Cushman and Fire Marshal Coppin have both been to the site. Um, I, I think they, they agree that there's significant damage there. I think what, what we don't have is neither of them is an engineer, structural engineer. And so we don't have sort of an engineer investigation about the unsuitability for rehabilitation. Um, that's, that's, you know, we, they can make a sort of a, an inspection of the site.
I, I wouldn't look to put them on, on the, you know, they're not, that's not their job designation. I understand that. Mr. Coppin is certainly qualified uh, to a degree. But again, it, it's one of those situations where um, you know, time is relevant to what we're doing. Okay. And to, at this point, we have reached out to find out who is available to do a, a dismantling engineering report. Well, it's, guess what, guys? It's months, not weeks.
Yeah.
Months. I'm not going to waste, I'm not going to, for this board to try to get us to comply with that when, I assure you that when you look at, and I invite anybody to come down, walk through this and actually do as my contractor has done, demonstrated clearly that the structure is, is not in, to be rehabbed. It's, it, the cost of doing that is unfortunate. And it's not going to develop the interest or the opportunity in the committee or the, the community by going to EV and having that as parking lot as a better alternative. It's a more progressive, it's a, it's a better use of the property at this juncture. And I'm willing to forego the income. Certainly because the cost of, of restoring the property exceeds its value. And so for us as a small business member in this community, what makes sense? It makes more sense to be able to have individuals that recognize that we can provide a service in the EV sector. And begin bringing those individuals into our community. In addition to that, employ an additional two to three people. And so the EV, I, it, it's larger than what I even grasp or understand at this point. And by this time next year, uh, there'll be another probably two to three percent in my customer base that will be driving the EV vehicle. And so it's an opportunity and you know, we're, we're trying to stay focused and be positive as opposed to, and if you're going to demand that I have an engineer's report, you know, so be it. But it will ultimately be the same conclusion of what we uh, are looking to have accomplished now.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. And just as a little bit of background behind the, the resolution. As you, I'm sure you know, we're in a housing crisis. And uh, and uh, and the city's been seeing um, some losses in housing units. We had housing units go down for a parking lot next to Brook Street School. Uh, the Catholic Church is tearing down a housing unit um, despite um, the DRB's denial and this, the Superior Court overturned it. So we're losing housing units. We're losing grand list value. All that value has to be picked up by the rest of the taxpayers. And uh, in some cases, you know, parking lots don't, uh, don't assess at the same level as homes. And so this is a, a measure to, A, to protect national registered story properties, which isn't your case, as I understand it. But B, to try to keep as many housing units online or bring back as many housing units as we can. As we wait to see what the buyout landscape might look like and certainly um, really, I know you've been hit really hard by this flood, um, both across the street and there. And the, the way the, the proclamation was written was so that there was an authority for council to think about individual circumstances um, with a two thirds of majority and to allow things to proceed through the normal demolition process. Um, but um, have you, I have one last question before I shift. I saw councillor Lozon's hands up. Have you considered selling it to somebody who might be willing to keep housing units online and put the park charging stations on your other lot across the street?
Well, I do have a contractor here, James, that would tell you, is also the Chief Cushman has looked at this property. The structural underside of that vehicle, it, if you were to come to me with a specific vehicle and say, hey, Dave, I need to get past an inspection. So we do the responsible thing. We'll look at the structural side of the vehicle. And then if it doesn't make economic sense, I won't do a repair or recommend, especially if it's not safe. So that's the circumstance it is with this property. For your proclamation and for what you're, I, I recognize that a loss in these beds. But the alternative and the upside is that the opportunity that creates by having an understanding of going forward, what would transition into the, the labor sector. The additional income that's going to be produced out of that facility, okay, is going to, I believe greatly offset what loss of income we all would have as a taxpayer. But also it just shows that we get it. We understand that there is a way forward out of this mess. And the exception to the rule uh, is a concession that certainly I'm asking for. But you have to just at some point conclude that the cost of restoring this uh, for either myself or anyone else. Mr. Lozon is understood as a shrewd investor. If he were to have his folks walk through this property, I believe that they could easily conclude as my contractor has that it just is not a safe scenario to begin with. And it economically, it doesn't equate. It would be in order to maintain your, your bed, it would be a tear down and then a rebuild. And you know, that's not a, not a direction that we would see would be beneficial to our business. And the business would obviously uh, be much better off by trying to get into that EV sector, but also make it available to community members, the opportunity. And one of these, one of these charging stations, and we believe that would be the quick charge, would be specifically for handicap as a, as a preference and a, and a priority. In the uh, outline of these, in the design of these, uh, they do advise and direct that you would make that space available on handicap accessible. Would cover in, in or heated space in the ground uh, to handle the snow issue. So those are all the things that we're willing to embrace and employ. But first it takes a concession by this, this committee. And we want to go forward. And I understand that restriction of loss of housing is important and imperative. But uh, that being said, there's a choice that in your wisdom, you're going to be asked to be uh, making a decision.
My question is why the engineer's report? Uh, I thought the standard was whether or not it's economically feasible. So for example, if the applicant was before us with something that said, well, here's a contractor's estimate, three hundred thousand dollars to repair this property. And then you simply do the math, okay? It's a three bedroom house rented for twenty-five hundred, thirty thousand a year. Pay your property taxes, pay your insurance, pay your maintenance, and then pay the debt service on three hundred thousand. It doesn't work. It ain't even close. So do we need an end? I thought the standard was the financial feasibility, not an engineering study.
Uh, councillor Lozon, the standard in the proclamation is the building needs to be deemed structurally suitable for rehabilit- if it's deemed not to be structurally suitable for rehabilitation, for rehousing or residential occupation, then it could be uh, granted sort of a, an exception outside that. It's a structural.
Structurally suitable no matter what the cost.
Not an economic. It, that's not, it's not contained in the proclamation.
How long's a state of emergency last on the proclamation?
This is, the emergency is still in effect, right?
It's in effect, yeah.
And uh, is there any reason why at this point?
We haven't evaluated the, the timing for that.
Okay. Um, the other, the other uh, trigger that ends this uh, councillor Lozon is amendment of the unified development regulations.
When now?
The amendment of the unified development regulations would end this proclamation. So following a second hearing and adoption of a yes vote. So. Yeah. So this, so that's where uh, city staff is um, looking for an engineering assessment to see.
Structurally suitable, structural suitability, yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay. So um, we have a proposal before us uh, to uh, request to authorize demolition in this case.
I'll make a motion to authorize it. I do have to make a comment, but I'll wait for a second on that.
A second, uh.
There's a motion and a second discussion?
Yeah, I, I think the proclamation is heavy handed. And uh, you know, you may have the right to do it. I, I don't think it's something that, I, I've never seen it happen before. And I, I just, I think we're more in recovery than we are a state of emergency. And to use the housing crisis as a continuance of that stating, of that state of emergency would, in my opinion, not be okay. But if you're saying that it goes away the minute we make the, the amendment uh, to the ADU, then I guess not a big deal.
Councillor Shumbell and then councillor Wazak?
Supposing the, supposing we did agree to the request, that piece of property, once it's torn down, is it still on the tax rolls?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But at a value of, or how is it valued?
Value would be adjusted based on the land and the improvements on it. So a parking lot and EV sta- EV stations would be improvements. And so they would contribute, contribute towards the assessment. I, I don't know enough about assessment to know whether it's equal with what the building is that's currently there. But there would be, it definitely still would be on the, on the tax rolls.
And um, is there an assessment, difference in assessments for businesses as opposed to residential? No. Okay.
Councillor?
Cause, cause it currently is a business. Because it's currently rental property.
Currently rental property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is a business.
Councillor Wazak?
Yeah. So I'll just say, you know, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of the demolition. Um, but just in the mayor's defense on this proclamation, I think the point was, you know, to pump the brakes. Because there was, you know, we were, we are in a housing crisis. And I do want to get as many housing units back online as possible. But you know, I think this case clearly rises to a level of it would not be reasonable to expect that anytime soon anyway. Um, and I really appreciate that you not, you're not just saying, I can't do it. You have a plan for the land moving forward. So I see the, you know, that's why we have this two thirds majority. So if somebody, you know, like Mr. Ayer, who I do believe has a reasonable case here, can come before the board and say like, hey, listen, I know there was this thing. I know we're trying to preserve as many housing units as possible. It's just not going to work for me. And it's okay to say yes to those things. But I think that what, I think why the proclamation was reasonable is because we didn't want two weeks after the flood, a bunch of folks to just get frustrated and tear down a bunch of housing that could have been a rehab. And that's clearly not what's happened here. You've clearly gone through the motions to prove um, to, to at least a level of reasonably that it doesn't make sense to rehab this. So it, I think we can do both and.
Yeah. And also, I'm sorry, councillor Deering.
He's got one first, and then I'd like to say something if you don't mind.
Yeah, please step up to the microphone.
I'm James Martin, I was just down there today. So I ventured down into the basement to look at the timbers myself. I was able to get these pictures and print them off just in time. However, there's a couple of things to consider here that I don't believe were touched on. One being that an empty property in and of itself is a blight upon a community oftentimes. That especially if it is not rehabable, and this is, is certainly not rehabable. Um, I know that previous inspections and walkthroughs that were done were done mainly from the outside of the building. I went all the way into the bowels of this building and you can reach up and pull chunks off the beams. So with your hands, it is absolutely not, it, it will not stand, let alone be, you know.
Thank you.
It, it cannot stand.
Thank you.
So I give it less than a year before it falls in on itself. And, and I'm not, I'm not exaggerating here. So I wish I were able to print more. I have more pictures on my phone. I could show you. But I, I can certify that it will not stand. It's going to fall down.
So if he just waits a year, he won't have to pay for the demolition.
He'll be responsible then for a liability of huge proportions.
Councillor Deering?
So my comment really is, Mr. Ayer, I appreciate you coming in and really having this plan set and trying to bring your business into the next generation with EVs. And really that entire line. Um, because like many of us have talked about that, you know, the use of EVs and hybrids is on the rise. And uh, is something that's very important and. is on the rise and is something that's very important and near and dear to many people on this council. So that's really one of the big reasons that I'm going to support this for you, is that you're trying to do better with your business and trying to bring it into the 21st century, shall we call it, or the 22nd. And I appreciate you trying to go above and beyond in doing that and not just saying, hey, I want to tear this down and have no, no idea what I'm going to do with it.
It's a, it's a positive move for the city. Are three, are three charging stations going to make a significant difference? Yes, actually it is. Why? Because it puts it on the map and people are looking. When we come into this and, and they need to, they're not going to be downtown Barry, well, now they would be. And if there's as many as 10, and if they're receptive, I, believe me, I, I anticipate that if it is received well and used well, that I've got a lot of other space as, as do others. And it's a way to bring individuals into our community that otherwise would not venture here. And so I think for the city of Barry, it's, it's a positive turn. So I'm just being optimistic.
Counsel Stockwell, no, I'll jump in.
I'm so sorry about your business. I, I remember going back, I went by after the flood had left and I was like, oh my God, what a loss. And so glad you're rebuilding. That's great. It's great for Barry. I, I think there's probably someone out there who would buy this property and try to put a house on it. You know, they maybe do a slab and put something, but, and really, we're not a community unless we have people who can live here. However, I would support your motion.
I was just going to give a heads up that I understand that one other request that might be coming in for demolition is the owner of the Beverage Baron is intend, intends to tear down the Italian Baptist Church. And that, so once this proclamation goes away, that I think Janet will be obligated to authorize the demolition of the Italian Baptist Church, which is a National Register of Historic Places site and one of the three signature places of the, of the Italian heritage. So just to preview that that's probably coming.
And I get that. And, and believe me, when I read the proclamation, I thought, that's good. You know, we're stopping from that, but I also think that you, we shouldn't be doing that, even though, just because it's, you should not be tearing down that church. It's a, you're correct. I completely agree with that. I just don't agree how you're getting there.
So I understand we have a motion and a second and maybe Janet, yeah?
I just wanted to let the council know that Mr. Air's parking lot isn't allowed to use.
It's what?
It's not allowed.
I think he said isn't. I feel like I should have brought that up sooner.
Oops. Or my office doesn't have to say no, you can.
Tell Kathy I said hello.
That's really good to know.
Thank you. Alright, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, guys have it, the motion carries. Oh, thank you.
Good night, Dave.
Best of luck rebuilding. So that takes us to upcoming business. I don't think we're meeting until October, right?
The 10th.
Yep. And we're doing, in part of that, you've sent out evaluation materials.
Yes, which will be the third.
That's our homework.
Yep.
Yeah, but we have the special Nicholas council on the third.
On the third.
On the third. So, okay, alright, so that's where I mixed up.
It's in my calendar, special Nicholas council.
Third and, alright.
What should I do here?
Anything else, Nicholas?
Uh, no, I think we're still, we have a couple of weeks to go, so it'll, the agenda will shape up.
Okay.
We'll have a couple more committee appointments, I know for sure. And we'll have to ratify the USW contract, but there'll be other stuff that, that comes up.
Alright. Anything else from counsel? Nope, alright. That takes us to roundtable. And who wants to, who wants to start?
I'll start.
Counsel, yeah, Counsel Derry, beat you to it, so.
So Spalding High School had a coin drop sanctioned by city council. Again, thank you all for approving that. They raised, I think, close to $4,000, which is well-needed. They're trying to buy new uniforms and really upgrade the look of the program while they also continue to add bodies to the program. So that was really a great blessing this weekend to see Spalding High School students really kind of getting their butt out there and doing something other than playing some video games or even playing a game of football. On that note, I'll transition to, we had probably 100 or so kids, not just from Barry, but from Fairfax this weekend, playing at Bond Field. Both of our Barry teams won this weekend up at Bond Field. So I just wanted to throw that out there and you know, let you guys know we'll also be up there Saturday, 8 o'clock. It's a Heritage Festival this weekend. So we have a game starting at 8:00 and then we also have another game starting at 9:30 at Bond Field. Love to see anybody that would like to be there.
Thanks.
Pass with that.
Counsel Lozahn?
Pass.
Counsel Stockwell?
I was discussing with a group of people anti-poverty programs and, you know, how they fail people regularly and they generally keep people in poverty rather than get people out of poverty, although it is not the design, well, it is the design. And I was thinking like, wow, what's hopeful? You know, what's hopeful about possibilities for change? And I was thinking, well, the people I've met in Barry City who have been, who volunteered to dig people out and the people who come and do this work and argue about policy and how we can create housing, that's the stuff that happens in Barry City that makes me hopeful for the rest of the world. And with that, I'll pass.
Counsel Boone?
Alright. So, I know. I'm going to go through the Heritage Festival thing, I'm sorry. So just, just so folks know, starting Wednesday is the Heritage Festival, but Farmer's Market, of course, is going to be there. Vermont Granite Museum is offering tours. Lenny's Outlet tent sale is going to be there. Barry Opera House is also offering tours. Go onto the Barry Partnership's Facebook page to find all this information. SPA is going to be offering, visit SPA and Art, Artist Studios, Rock of Ages guided tours. All this is happening. You get to meet the author in the park, sorry, Aldrich Public Library, Rick Winston, that's Wednesday night. And I had to look him up. He's so good. He's so good. You know it. Anyway, Earthly Wonders ribbon cutting is 10:00 AM on Thursday. And of course, you know, the tours are all there. Then Food Truck on Thursday nights as well, still having that. And Ally Tarwater is going to be at the Courier Park for the concerts in the park. Shane McGrath at Ladder One Grill. Meet the author, Stephen Clark? No. Okay. Next chapter. Movie night at the park, at Courier Park, and they're going to be playing Matilda, the one with Danny DeVito. It's very important, it's not the, the Netflix special that took forever.
Continue. I'm going to make a ritual during this.
Anyway, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's going on and I highly.
Where can people find this list?
It's at the Barry Partnership Facebook page. Yes, it's on my phone. There's a lot that's going on, folks, and come to the Heritage Festival and I will stop, I'm sorry. Since everybody was getting a little.
Counsel Lozahn?
Uh, thank you. It's going to be a fun weekend.
Yeah.
Feels a little different, you know, with everything that we've been through, but it's still going to be a very, very fun weekend. And whenever I see you, Mr. Coppin, I think of racing. And so here's a racing story for you. What kind of friend am I? So a friend needed help this weekend. So Friday night I flew down to Florida, jumped in a Porsche Turbo Carrera at 7:30 Saturday morning and pulled into Barry at 7:30 Sunday morning. Ooh wah. And that's that. Yeah, top that. Cannonball run.
I, I can't compete, I pass.
I've been in a car with Counsel Lozahn and he kind of has a lead foot too. But, and also, you know, just something you said, Counsel Stockwell triggered for me. We talked about low-wage workers and their transportation needs and, and ladders out of poverty. And I think, you know, we often use the term, you know, a low-wage worker. And I really think, you know, we should start using the term like a welfare worker because they need welfare. The wage is not livable wage. They can't afford their basic needs and they, and, and they need public supports in many cases because we, we don't pay a livable wage for so many workers. And it'd be nice to see more people get to a livable wage, a self-sustaining wage for all jobs. Really excited for the Heritage Festival. I'm excited for the concert Thursday night, going to be, going to that. I think all the proceeds benefit the Barry Community Relief Fund for that one. And I also noticed the Vermont Businesses for Social Responsibility were hosting an event in Waterbury and they're going to be recognizing Shaun Trader and the Rainbow Bridge Community Center for all their flood recovery work that they did for the, the Barry community. So it's going to be a fun weekend, certainly a well-deserved respite for so many people that need, need a distraction and connection with neighbors. And, but the work will continue. Yep. So thanks.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Yay.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. We're adjourned at 8:43.
No.
Oh, yeah.
It's probably close. 8:39.
8:39. Mary Ann and Connie Jones.